Good evening, everyone. We'll call the council meetings to order for the evening of October 4th. And we'll begin, as usual, with the pledge of allegiance. Now, escort deputies in pass. If you would please leave us some attention.
My pledge of allegiance is to the land, and the United States of America, and to your mother, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stacy, if you'd call the room.
Mayor Fraser.
Here.
Harris.
Ms. Hager. Here. Mr. Mickey Humble.
Here.
Mr. Randy Humble.
Here.
Ms. Shaeta. And Mr. Trump had.
Here.
Thank you. You have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, and motion carried. Motion to approve the amendments from our September 13th meeting. So moved.
Second.
No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, and motion carried. You have no scheduled appointments? I already have the public safety report, and I'll ask Lieutenant Aldman.
Excuse me, mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we have a special announcement that just came in. Dawn, come here and give me a hand. Wait a minute, no, this is important. Go ahead, mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay. Lieutenant, before you give your report, why don't you tell us about the pictures that you'll have on tonight?
Certainly, obviously, I go over breast cancer awareness month. Breast cancer affects many men and women across the United States every year. And we were channeled by a member of the state's attorney's office to step up and follow a little campaign to seek donations and heighten awareness for breast cancer. And the whole Beach group decided to join Dave and I, so we're going to, as a group, ten of us together. We have a webpage, and Stacy and Ann or Dawn will post our photo on the page. We ultimately hope to get the whole ten of us together and seek donations. You know, we're going to have a turn of Beach Pink Day and go to some of the people, Face Chevy and things like that, seeking donations for breast cancer. So we'll have a link on there. Contributions go directly under our name. We're obviously going to try to be the heaviest hitter here in this area. Bob Partridge is going to be the big goal. And that's our goal, so we're going to go after him and hopefully take him down. But he opened the door with $3,000 and
Wow.
Yeah, he did. The first day, he was, he had $3,000 in the bank, so we're going to try to surpass that, try to beat him. Anyway, so everybody's here, and pink is the color to bring awareness. It's the councilman, that, you've got his pink ribbon on, so we challenge everybody to support us. If you can't give or don't feel compelled to give, the website, please share it with your friends and family and encourage them.
Well, thank you, Ron, I certainly admire you for that.
Would it be okay if I had the deputy's phone?
We're going to absolutely take a picture of you, yeah.
Okay, you want to do it now or later?
Why don't you give your report?
Okay, we'll do that. All right. So for the month of September, we handled 156 calls for service. It's down to 166 in August. And you can see the breakdown of calls. One CBA violation, acquitted, standing possession with intent to destroy marijuana, closed by arrest. Four thefts. Most of those were closed, one's under investig- two are under investigation. Actually, the burglary from our residence, this is a disputed burglary. And then CBA marijuana arrests, the seven disorder arrests, overdose, so forth.
What night was that, Ron?
Which one are you speaking of, sir?
The night.
That was the farm tomorrow night, sir.
The most recent one?
Uh, last week, yes, sir.
Uh, it was two weeks ago.
Two Fridays ago.
Where did it actually occur?
It was in Second Street.
Fourth, fourth and North. Over there in Park?
We've got a No, it was on the street side of the community center, but we've got a group of seven or eight people that have been, and we've actually started tracking. Trying to get a little group or gang going here in the beach, and we've started tracking with our intel group each and every time we encounter them and so and where we encounter them, so we can keep track of what they're doing.
Were these part of that group?
Yeah. All of them, weren't they, Don? Yep.
Sir, so you consider yourself to be on top of it?
Yeah, absolutely.
They're all juveniles?
Uh, they're all ju- I think maybe one or two adults, but the majority of them are juveniles. When I say adults, right at 18. If there's no questions on that, I'd like to, we lost one of our members here in the Beach group. To went to the schools to take over as a school resource officer, and we have a new officer in the Beach for the first time in a long time. I'd like to introduce Nikki Gilmore, too. She comes to us, she's been in drugs.
Did you say Nikki or Nicky?
Nikki.
Nikki. Oh, welcome, Nikki.
She was, she was in our undercover drug unit for the last 10 years. Two and a half years. She brings a lot of experience in that field to the Beach.
Oh, we're happy to have you here.
That'll be my next question.
So she said. Derek Clark.
That's right. Anybody have any questions, Lieutenant, for the taking the photograph?
Does Ricky, does he have any?
He does, Mr. Bennett, and I probably got to not forward that to you. Tom does the report, he forwarded that to me, and I did not forward it to Tom, but he does, he does it on everyone, so. I'll make sure that I start it to Tom, and that way you guys will have
Anything that we can know about, or?
Uh, no, there's nothing major. A lot of his file, right now, he's working on a property, a water park. Recently broke into a water park, he's working on that. He does a lot of follow-up, he's very good at detailed follow-up on death reports. He's because of the medical background, you know, so he got an overdose or something like that, he's
Burglary that's listed on there, that's disputed, he's investigated.
Yeah, disputed burglary, he's
I ran into him, I went to the post office, and he was, had taken a report against somebody.
Somebody stole the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, when he's, when there's not much to investigate, I mean, he goes out and he goes over and past me. We're pretty close, and we don't have a whole lot to investigate, so.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and get your photograph.
All right. 18, that'll do it on your mark, right?
Lowering the volume a bit. Joe, should I pause for you now, or?
No, I'm sorry, I cannot. My apologies, I'll be able to share it with you later.
I'd just like to, oh, we should have got your staff to come around and see if you're on the computer. I'd just like to thank you for your efforts to the breast cancer. I'm really
Thank you.
Joe, do you have a question?
I do, I do. My apologies, it's not in the packet, I sent it over separate cover, I hope everybody will see it. Okay, you can see July 1st through July 31st, unaudited report. The beginning balance is 563,000. Total damage is 506,000, and total credits is 550,000. Ending balance is 520,000. Investments in MLGIP is 2,668,000. MLGIP sewer capital is 34, and MLGMP water capital is 7. Total cash available to the town of North Beach for the month of July was 3230,000. Hotel tax received in the month of July was zero, and business license was 1690.
Zero? I don't, I don't know, $16 and 90 cents?
Yes, $16 and 90.
Zero.
Next one, there's some road show.
All right, I haven't got it for $800 a night, it's a whole other thing, there should be a lock show.
Does the county wear that? Are any of the county wear that?
I guess they are, they went through there. They went through the process.
All right, any questions of Joanne?
Joanne, what's on? Is the cam- cameras at Cal's Park, are they installed?
They actually are installed, they are
The cameras at Cal's Park do work. The Comcast part is not fully functional, you can go inside the town station and view the cameras, just are not reviewable on computers yet.
Got it, thank you.
I could have a motion to accept the treasurer's report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, since you have a product, it's, this item is called works and work, going in addition to routine tasks. First, we have on the list here is a hat, I found it at an onsite meeting with DJN. And this is kind of important, because what we're trying to do at the water station upgrade, is we're trying to get DJN to come in, look at what we need to do, get all that stuff out of there first, because then we can get that work done and have it ready to go. And in that way, if we do start working on the water station, we can almost have the well online, working on the building. If we have the deck replaced and new channel replaced. So we had an onsite meeting with designer. He said he's about three weeks out from when we met that day, to get the design back to us and their cost system. So that brings the council, and we can see what the first year, how we work that.
We performed a routine flushing of the town water system this week, and while flushing, there's several hydrants still being drained. So while we were out doing, you rather did the flushing, went in and started remating, so the hydrants keep down bottom, except chipped off rust and normal stuff. Started down the waterfront, we're working our way back, you can notice, we're going to do it a lot better, so. And then, I'm trying to bring that up, too, because that's the time, every quarter, that we check the hydrants, make sure they're all in working condition for the fire department, these emergency screens, and every, keep a list, I want them to listen, we have any hydrants, any address, and they address that, so every quarter, we do that.
They're all performing right?
All performing, we have one that needs, it's just me, I have to talk to see if they're all on work.
How many do we have?
Uh, around 48, 49, Sam just got up there.
Good work.
Um, we did, the other crew actually did it Wednesday, and removed the old, I think, playground equipment that was in Cal's Park. And the reason we did this, we got that out the way to create a bigger playing field for, you know, kickball, football, and a couple of councilmen, and both of them removed. And that's also in conjunction with, we have the new phase two of the playground equipment installed there. We kind of located that, because we're in the area that was pretty wet, always stayed muddy, there were other doors that come in and out. We tracked it up, and you never have to dig grass, or even prison out trap. So what we did, we decided to put the equipment, the mulch, and everything in that area, and then that'll, you know, make the area nice, keep it cleaner, keep it from getting wet. But it made the field back where the old jungle gym, to give a bigger feel there. So that's where I think it's more of a, for getting rid of backstops already, so. On the kickball, football, the Comcast, the fence, through as long as, grass, the grass established there, so.
There's a dome on the play.
And the Um, we're supposed to schedule to start work from that, probably in the next 10 days. We assisted Beach Patrol with all the storms and high tides and flooding, there's a ton of, and there's a lot of There's a ton of wood debris on the beach, somewhere a few days, probably filled up on this dumpster, a group work. Did have some residents here, that's a group work. We're going to do a sign up, a group work, and we did have a lot, quite a few things there, so it's good. And I think Rachel, I can't remember exactly, we had some volunteers came out last week, and a lot of the beach was finished up. So hopefully, that was sort of in force, debris and all, in the beach. Uh, continuing work with downtown water and sewer department, I'll give them to you a smoke test. All, some working with the units, all, so eye contact with their, like, their field guy, headed field, and they actually scheduled that. And the reason I bring this up, is we get a lot of end flows from their system right outside of Greenwood there. And Greenwood pumps facing their problems with that, all that's coming from the county. And then, we did count, we have 670 residents down the common, through the town of North Beach, you have a testing beach, it's plenty. But when they have problems up there, they cause us a lot of problem, a lot of flow that we have to pay for, um, and a lot of extra hours, all that type of stuff, so. And work with them, they do, he told me that they do have the test set up there. So hopefully, in the next month, they'll do that smoke test and solid, so at least recognize the problem, and we'll solid, you know, a lot of us. Um, we started addressing the alleys after all the rain all summer long, a lot of the alleys that bowled in, that bit stuck. So we started looking down, and addressing some of the alleys, having grab, re- creating them, addressing them. Seven years, important item that we kind of, we would have on the list, and we've been hanging out for a little while, is the crosswalk. Do you remember the crosswalks we had, we installed, and the borders, the town, the county was very happy with the white borders, so. Up on the crosswalks. Um, there's still outstanding balance on the crosswalk project. Contractor, we met, me, Paul, and the contractor met on site, we looked at the borders, showed exactly what we're talking about. The guy that came down, actually agreed that they did it professional, and they did look like they should. You know, came up with this, he says, he's all, they came back and tried to do a repair, one of them chipped up and damaged sections. The mayor had to go out and look and see, you know, what looked good, and, you know, we did pay him for any of the work. But when I started looking, actually, none of them really looked great, so. The contractor came down, we, we owe him about $20,000, roughly $20,500. He made an offer, and he sent the invoice in for around $15,000, so he knocked out $5,000. In my opinion, with your permission, or whatever the council decides, and I'd be like to send some to the exile, you know, that never were put in, has respect. He didn't come out, he spent a lot of time doing this and work, so I'd just like to see what the council thinks about it, and whether he wants to make a counter offer, or myself and Paul kind of told him, out of sight, it's not done, it's a respect, and never looked done, you know, where it was supposed to be, so, we kind of, nothing like that. We don't want to go to reflection, anything, or whatever, stuff like that, because I already made stuff. I hadn't heard, he sent the invoice probably 30 days ago, so I asked when, mainly because it's expected for the symbols. And I wanted to waste our night with the county, but the council's putting that, see what you wanted to do, and see what my ideas were, and listen, please, Tom, if you'd like.
Does that, does that conclude your report?
Um, that, I did get a late email, probably about 4 o'clock today, from Gene, as I asked him for an update, on the berm and the planning, I'm looking. It felt like weeds is kind of looks pretty rough. We talked about, he sent an email, we did attach his, you know, their report, too. But I had, he forgot, I called him earlier, he wasn't in the office, so he was sending it, he said he'd send it tomorrow. He is, he does have an updated report, they're, I'm that guy, replant, that land side of the berm is looking pretty rough. You know, you got some buggered trees growing, no damage to the berm itself, so you can't have any trees as a root chain in there, and that's caused damage to the arm, so. He's a little bit concerned, I said, you know, I mean, we can push all the way down, we can cut the weeds off, opportunity to come down and replant, you know, that's So they had a pretty long conversation, I said, I want that update, but I expect to see you probably next week, yeah, so.
Yeah, I had one question, is like, do we have that legal, like, last system this time?
Um, it wasn't really unusual, we waited probably another month, just sort of took that, I mean, we want flush, and then add to the, you know, the water, the playground yards, that's, you know, some kind of, add to that. Kind of waited, finally, a couple of odd days, but it probably was another month longer, but usually flush every three months.
Yeah. Yeah, because it just seemed to take a lot more than clear this time.
Yeah. The hydrants, we, what we did, when we were wrong, we actually timed, and we were right down, how many minutes? And we had like one or two spots, where it was a little bit longer than most of them, most of them were like two, three minutes, and they cleared off, but it wasn't like a bunch of, maybe one or two spots, it was
Thank you, any other questions? All right, let's, since he's raised the subject, let's spark that right now.
They, they, the contract's not established.
So what is, what is the will of their council?
I was, I mean, I was a builder contractor, and if I didn't fulfill the specification, I could sue all day long, I'm never going to win. They didn't perform to their duty, and they could keep it, well, find out how much will it cost to have a professional company to fix it? It's going to be a lot more than $20,000.
That's
Other than
Well, you have to wish
That's the sad part about it.
They can't even get a break the first time.
We have, you know, if we, we can get a price, what I would suggest is we get another, find another contractor, can do this work, and then we have totally different contractors, and they come down and explain to them the problem, that, you know, I'll, it'll be a better job, we can get a price, you know, that would be your, and then, you know. The problem is now, the way they did it, you almost have to
With the blacktop?
Yeah, you have to go out there and throw in mess of earth, and you can, hell, now, where the waters are at, laying them asphalt, and then you almost have to put in there, what, strike? That's why, well, me and Paul, nothing, you know, we don't, we want to come right, you know.
Yeah, you know, we spent so much time trying to get this thing right, trying to get the right people.
Right, and we have guaranteed that they were effective, approved. They were happy to come back with like a $5,000, like, they'll, they could swallow.
What did the regional managers, uh, they got, then they could
He was at MML Comp, so he thought, so, and he's not happy at all, but the only power he really can have is not use him as one of this installed. He looked at him, he's a lot of that, but me and Paul also, and said he would, happy, he understands why we're frustrated.
Yeah, yeah, because I talked to him, I talked to him.
So is the will of council still pending?
That's my
Yes. We can, do you want to draft something, and then we'll send it back to you, yeah, Sam.
We don't Here's, here's my question, how many white lines are there, how many of them are I'm not, I'm looking at that, like, not every single one is
Yeah, it is.
So, and then I'm looking at it, is it a real cosmetic issue we're picking apart, or is it like? Because like, there's a couple where, like, I walk by, and honestly, it doesn't even face me, it's like, it's white on it. Then there's someone that's like, okay, that one's bad.
Some of the worst scenarios, I want to have to try to justify, you know, paying for so many, many of your feet. But when we started looking, we're like, maybe just, really, all of that issue, you know, somewhere, compared to what they could look like right now.
Well, yeah, like, I send these over, I ask them, are they okay, I assume they're going to be bad. I want someone to be in the okay area, but there are some that are bad. But I don't think, like, again, I'm just out of it, it's like, I know work is done. And I, I will, I don't feel comfortable saying none of it is done, I feel like there has to be some of it done, but, I don't know. We're paying 2% of what I'm
Let's think about it, contract was, I can remember, not bad, 120, 150,000.
Yeah, 150,000, around there.
So I'm sure he made, out, kind of like he didn't pay, but he was, he was in Vegas, kind of, right, Rick Farz crosswalk. This was just a man, and we were, you know, we were, I mean, just myself thinking, and he came back saying, you know, they, they look terrible, you know, $700,000. I agree, he's paid us every $700,000, I forgot about it, but when he said $15,000, that's how much it was this time.
You said, though, that, that you did, that you thought you'd use that crew again, is there another crew that would come and fix it?
There's a crew in Pennsylvania that we almost had, because we had so much trouble with them, but then, um, this is the guy who did the job for us, he's in, like, Delaware and Maryland. So it's because there, and we got in Pennsylvania, and they were able to settle on the roads, because they all kind of worked together. So he didn't, he didn't want that guy, come up there and work in Pennsylvania, so they kind of stick it around the areas. And then that guy would have been more expensive, probably, come down, so at the time, you know, we were, you know, price and quality, and we were kind of guaranteed, you remember, how many times they came in and guaranteed?
Yeah.
There were certain factors, certain solvers, and blah, blah, so. And we also talked to several town borrowers, the one, you know, Red Leeswood.
Who was that, the same crew that put it in there?
It was the same
Same subcontractor.
But he had two of his main formal equipment right before he started here, I remember. And then a brand new crew that got trained by the factory, that's And he did okay with the red part, but this, the border, he's on that.
All right. Let me, someone make a motion.
I vote that we not pay.
There's a motion that they, that we pay nothing on this, so a second? And a discussion before we go.
Oh, I'd just like to throw in that we do find out what it will take to fix. You buy a new car, you don't expect it not to be a new car. And I know that we're all contractors, so he knows that, too. So I'd just like to throw in that we need to find out what's going to take to fix it.
Instead of waiting for another council or workshop meeting, not to find out, this, next week, and do that, but you know, if I try to, you know, is that going to make any difference in your move?
No.
I have to look at the contract, but presumably, it is a standard contract. In fact, you have, you haven't had a remedy in there, and an out of justification not to pay them particularly, until you find out how much such a performance is going to cost, that's really the issue. You're entitled to live on credit if you're bargain, which is having a satisfactory, that, a credit that's accepted by the town. So I have to multiple town and, you know, people who are, you know, have a person supervisor, engineer, and so if they're not, then, right, I would definitely not pay them. I mean, the, the worst case scenario is, in the end, you end up paying them something. But I certainly wouldn't, if you pay them now, you're never going to get a
Right, they're just going to end up, right, through the category, if you pay that amount, that you can oversee.
All, all those in favor with the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Um, he'll send you the contract documents with it.
And then I'll sign it, sure, if I can.
Yes.
So just so you have it, yeah.
Hello, Karen. That's Paul. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, had my report, I can answer any questions, but just wanted to touch on just a couple things. The plan, I guess we prepared a plan, helped together a little, some information to the mayor to send down to the board library. Any questions, we'll, I can sort of answer it. We have, I think I attached the final plan for the franchise area. Look, kind of showing which properties, if we pull back, we could serve in County County, we talked about that as well. Another list is working on that. I saw a plan, did everyone see?
Yeah.
And maybe any questions I can show? And then finally, we have a, what I call, it's a flood litigation plan, I think this has come before the council back in 2016. My understanding is that what was prepared by County County, and my understanding is it's still not adopted by the board of commissioners from the county, don't know exactly when it's going to be out here soon, but I, I would recommend that each one of the council read this. It will eventually come before you for review and questions, and hopefully adoption. Many of the items in here, and I'll just leave the rates Many of the items in here, um, and I'll just leave the rates at the end. Uh, there's kind of nine recommendations, some are short-term recommendations, many of which you have already done. And some of which, you know, you will be faced with over the next hundred years, or eighty years, this goes to 2,100. And basically, the 2,100 is for the sea rise. So, and, uh, and some of the recommendations in there, I'm not sure how practical they are. They talk about the floating houses and things, don't they? It's enjoyable to read, but I don't know how practical it really is. Uh, some of the things, you know, like Rick, when he does his planning, they talk about possibility of considering, you know, higher bumpers, um, for floods, so if they rebuild, you've got no house right now, you have a total flood elevation, let's say, of, of four. Sure, so, okay, but you need a buffer for your electrical and your outlets and first floor, and then the recommending maybe add another foot to that or consider over the years because of sea rise. So there's, there's several things in here to consider. I think most of them are practical and you would probably want to consider. There's some things, I was talking to Dami and the mayor, um, you know, that maybe you guys should get on your, um, emergency text or on your website, that if you do have a flood, people can go to there and see, you know, what, what radiation they should listen to for emergency evacuation, or what should I do, or who should I call. That's a lot of good information, and I think the town should probably look forward to doing that. But, um, if you have any questions on this, feel free, uh, the, the author of this, um, the gentleman's name's, Ronald, I think it's Marnie, I believe, is the rural planner of Cal County, and he's able to answer questions if they happen as well.
Oh, as a practical matter, the town does or does not take action before the county adopts the, the plan?
I mean, obviously you could take action, but I wouldn't, because if the, if the county changes something or does something different, it's not against the community contract, so recommend you wait. I don't see any reason why you can't implement something, you've already done a lot of them. There are good recommendations.
The burn.
Well, the burns in here, obviously.
I, I thought, I thought there was a hard date or had the adopted by the county.
They haven't done it yet.
Yeah, I mean, you know what I mean.
Yeah, I don't know what that date is, I don't know, I talked to them. They said, uh, I think Stacy might talk to them too, I don't know if you have a different brief, but what I heard was that, uh, they thought it would be soon, but you didn't, they didn't know the exact date, he wasn't doing it right.
Couple of years ago, we were told, it's a couple of half, we got some doctor.
Wow. Again, my recommendations.
They're not gonna be done by this board.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, that's what I mean.
They came up here with a presentation that night.
Yeah.
Very long presentation, but.
Yeah, and it was like.
Said it was gonna be done very quick.
Yeah, it was like next week, uh, we was a little dogged, saying, you guys are gonna think my daughter the week after. And that was a year and a half ago, anyway.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Paul. Okay, uh, great.
And, um, can you, the last month, heavily concentrated on doing rental inspections. Started to feel a little more, lack of a better word, harder on the inspections.
Aggressive.
A little more aggressive on the inspections, and we've had some that, uh, have not complied, that we've made, didn't make repairs and do other things. Those are, kind of start to slow it down a little bit here, we'll be able to concentrate on some other things. Uh, still trying to find a way to add some things to the report, so in the meantime, we're just gonna add them at the bottom, some people have asked for them, so. We did start issuing parking tickets in the green zones, that was brought up, so, you know, we did do five of those. Our civil citations, uh, this is hopefully, we worked our, our issue out of that, so we've got, we're about to court date spending for issues, thirteen actually. Um, we're back, uh, on with the flagging, we're in for NBA with the parking tickets now, we sent all our security forms in. We did buy a towing contract, for a towing contract that wants to do the towing in the town. Should have had his signs, and the other thing is done with him the next week or two, hopefully, he's working on that. And other than that, I did, uh, approximately seventeen zoning permits between Miss Langus and regular zoning for new houses, additions, business expansions. Uh, I've got the critical area report that I'm working on to finish up. And we did have and finalize a contract for demolition of the Able House, which will be done by the 26th of this month.
Rick, was something demolished on the fifth?
Not, I don't know.
No, it was a lot, that's a, that's a lot.
Trees in there.
Yeah, that's a lot that Scott, uh, subdivided, and they're, they're gonna build a new house there.
Do you have, Rick, no carry others in this yet? Because I don't have any.
Yeah, they just called and scheduled them for.
That's fine, just make sure I know.
Okay.
What the date is, so that I don't watch.
Okay, I'll send you.
This is a lot of nuts and home stuff, Rick, but this is very important stuff. The warm kind of background. I, I can tell you, you're getting the eyes of weeds and doing these things.
Everyone's recently wanted to stop, so I'm so tired of them.
What was that?
Well, Stacy said, it's for the Maryland Flood Plains Storm Water Management Association. And I've been calling their trains and trying to get certification, and so they've got, uh, their annual houses is coming up. Stacy forwarded me her things, saying that they were giving a scholarship out for people to be able to attend for free. And to write us a small essay or something, so, you know, I'll go ahead and try it. I was awarded a scholarship. I'll be attending that in a few weeks as well. Oh, and I have to be, I now have to be a moderator for the conference as well, so I've gotta get there like seven, five. I was thinking he was gonna tell you now, and he said, you know, you're gonna get to come to this for free. After you, after you were awarded, he said, oh yeah, this is great, thank you, and I said, oh, and has a, on top of that, in order to accept this, you have to be a moderator.
Excellent, that's good, you're a great man, the association.
Congratulations. Your stars rise.
I need about two minutes out.
Go on.
Hello. So for September and, um, first few days of October, um, still monitoring the short check inventory and sales. We're only open Fridays now, through the last Friday's, we're only Monday too. And we plan on opening for Boo Bash and Hound of the Town, um, the Christmas parade and hold it at lunch. And after that, we shut down until spring. We worked on information, got information out about, um, storm preparation and things for the curving horns, which we didn't get much from that, but, um, we have sandbags available and shared information with the residents on what to do, um, playing stuff. Uh, we're working on the term of the town with Boo Bash and token of flyers, all the commercial materials for that. We have a special event meeting on Monday and talk about all the details. September, I began working on the newsletter, today I finished the newsletter, so, I'll be mail tomorrow. Of course, ads and stuff to promote the town and weddings and events. I worked on the twins up here, but, um, we saved the date for this EBC summit that is going to be held here on October 10th. I worked on that and sent that out to, um, every business in town and collected the RCPs for that. Of their tests, the website, social media, text notifications. I didn't include, um, the, um, short check sales for September, there's a mistake, I have August there, but it's for September. Three hundred and eighty-five dollars, um, total number of items sold for September, thirty-six. Unfortunately, it was Friday, so. Um, I got an update about the trademarks, about just the MB and then the MB with the tagline. Um, their opposition was filed, which means that they're allowed by the trademark office. Now we have to file a statement of use.
That is six months.
Yeah.
And it's filed on August.
I know, it'll probably be a year by the time, but everything's good with that, we're moving along. I also wanted to mention, that's, she's closing her store in San Diego.
I saw that.
Yeah, so she's, I still don't know. But IPH here in North Beach is taking over her balloon business, which is good.
True.
IPH.
Love tattoos.
Yeah, she loves tattoos, uh, beauty, but now she's doing the lonely part of it. Um, our text notification subscribers, we have three, I'm forty, uh, six of those now. Nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight followers on Facebook, so we're almost at ten thousand. Um, Twitter is one thousand two twenty-five, Instagram is one thousand seven twenty-one.
I mean, Facebook.
Nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight.
I think that's a price for a ten thousand person.
I think we did that for like the five thousand person.
How many is Tessa's account?
And they have four thousand.
She know that.
Well, Brandy knew and I knew, I don't know why he would know, but I figured out. Tessie, she tells four thousand.
Two thousand and two hundred and fifty, because that's relative to their population. How did you get so many more Facebook members than people here?
You don't have to ask that.
That's a good question to ask, and they're, and they're matched, baby.
Go on, you, you, you just continue to do a wonderful job. It's really impressive.
Thank you for allowing me to do.
All right, Veronica.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, this month I've worked on, well, let me do, uh, where we are right now. So today we received a hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. The last thirty days, we received three no's, which I felt kind of some kind of way about. Um, we got a no on the park ranger from State of Ireland. Um, we got a no for SAK, their elevated walkway, which, uh, my heart broke on that one, because I was really crossing my fingers and my toes on that one.
But we reapply.
We, we reapply for SAK, the elevated walkway, so this is upstate in time. However, they did say that they wanted to continue working with the town, I'm not sure what that means, was we gonna follow up, meeting with them?
That's the way it works. You just, you just wear them down.
Oh, okay, is that it, okay, well, we're wearing them down.
Don't let them off the hook.
Right.
Um, we also received a no recently for, um, and this one was a little bit of a stretch, but, um, I thought we would just go for it. It's a training grant, so I thought that we would apply for the Main Street Conference and try to get funding for that, um, but they said no. Um, so I talked to them today, and they said, um, come back and ask for some training for maybe one of your departments, like code enforcement or DPW. So I'm gonna reapply, um, for that. Just to give you an update on where we are with the healthy living program. Um, we, we've exceeded all of our funding, um, twenty-five thousand is now captured with the homeowners that, um, have all applied. Except six, we, so we have about, I think it was six or ten, um, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring the exact number. But all of those people will be, um, will be working on their houses in the next thirty days and all of the things. For energy efficiency will be completed by November. And then we have a waiting list of six additional homeowners that have qualified, um, and they will be on the waiting list. I've called NEA for additional funds. We'll see what happens with that, but there is another round coming up. So I'm teeing up the next application, so we can continue that program for next year. I'm working on an application, um, with NEA to get a card for code enforcement and for DPW. So I thought I would go for two. Try to get a pickup truck for DPW and a gen for code enforcement. And we're still waiting for the state to tell us about community legacy. I keep bugging them, they say any day now. So fingers crossed that that will be our yes, uh, with either the elevated walkway or legislative way project. On the last page, I don't know if you need to show, but not, because not a lot of people here, but it was just a, um, wrapper of the healthy living program. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Veronica. Did anybody have any questions? You just wear them down.
I know.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there public comment tonight here? Theater day was forty-one, ten, Thursday. Just three quick things, and all of our unranked, it's a hard work. Take a ride through the community today, we didn't go through, um, burnouts or, um, San Francisco. Town is looking spectacular. Mark, you know, we've been here twelve years, and you know, it looked like twelve years ago, and it's just, it's indescribable how many improvements we've noticed today, and how proud we are to live here. And the second thing is, um, I endorse the no pay on the sidewalk. Aside from the aesthetics, the, I mean, effectiveness element totally kind of, I move slow, but I can't move fast enough to get across the street. Cars are not stopping. They do have some curves, so it's not, not that I can't be recognized. But I notice others, and I think Dami, you and Wendy worked on it from the sidewalk, they just do not stop for no reason whatsoever. And on the more pleasant of, uh, at least from my perspective, somewhat humorous, Glenn's still looking for her pillows that were stolen off the sidewalk. So, you know, um, anybody?
Sorry, here.
Yeah, but they didn't take them all, and Charlie got up, got up and noticed the knees. She started barking and they got stopped, and they dropped three of them on the porch, but they, they took three or four, so. Everybody's doing a good job, thank you, man. Yes, Matt, anything? All right, uh, we have one business item. One of our members of the planning commission is up for reappointment, I'm really doing a note, Bill Hyner. He asked to be reappointed, so. Asked for a motion to reappoint Bill Hyner to the planning commission.
Is that moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, he's a very good member. No ordinances and resolutions. Randy, how about your report?
Okay, real quick, and this is just to allies of concern. Paul and Rick both have, uh, got San Francisco flood, they were staying consulting here, they're on, they're on, they have, he has been in contact with, with him off. And Paul, I mean, he's still very familiar. Nothing other than, uh, I don't think it's worth my time.
Can't forget, uh, driving movie, uh, Boo Bash.
He, you know, he can get them all summer, I had the last one.
But the date is?
Yeah, October twenty-seventh. And the movie is?
Beetlejuice.
Nope.
No, it's not Beetlejuice. What is it? Addams Family, that's my, I think.
That's why, that's why Mickey gives a report.
Well, I was so excited about Beetlejuice being on the big screen.
I was too, just couldn't get the rights.
Right. I know.
Well, with the jaws.
Well, and I told you, I was gonna stick a fork behind, we had Grease in any country, so.
That's a good movie.
I was gonna stick a fork behind, obviously, yeah. Anyway, uh, I'm gonna go back to everything.
What?
I just wanted to break everybody's attention in a notification that we got, to please lock your vehicles and have no valuables visible. While breaking into cars and vehicles.
That, that's constant, yeah.
Not constant.
Oh, yeah.
If you negate yourself, why?
Do you have any things to buy drugs? Good, thank you.
I was real quick, on the twenty-third of October, I'm gonna give in a workshop here at Cal County from seven to eight p.m. Um, staying safe online and securing your identity. So it's totally free.
Thank you, Paul. Something we're gonna have to place more in the morning.
Yes, of course.
Well, I missed something.
I just wonder. Um, I, I just want, for the pleasure of the council and the. I just want, for the pleasure of the council and mayor and everybody else, see if we can get, be able to do this, this was passed on to me, uh, from Casa, as you know, I am one of the, uh, the Twin Beaches Awareness Committee, and this has come up, this started in nineteen eighty-five, nineteen eighty-six, Congress got involved, but it's, it's the history of the Red Ribbon Week. All I would like to see is if we could do this, we have three neighborhood watch signs at the entrances, one at each one, and what this is asking, um, if we could, between the twenty-third to the thirty-first, support this by putting a red ribbon on those three signs, not the main sign, just the neighborhood watch sign. Um, and this is, this in support for those who are struggling and fighting on addiction, and so for sure that our community supports their life. And I just want to pass it on and, and see if I can let Candace know that we can do it, and that's pretty much my report for tonight.
This one?
Yes.
October, what, what was?
Twenty-third to the thirty-first.
Yeah, you can get some red bows, three of them.
They'll provide them, they'll go, they'll provide them.
Yeah, they provided them last. Oh, okay. Yeah, I think it's one other time.
You know, I, I still remember that story, every day coming around, I still remember that.
So, you were there, or you asked, or you were?
I'll do it, thank you so much.
Mickey?
Um, Peter, thank you for coming out. How are you doing?
Okay, um, that concludes our business, ex promotion, to adjourn and go into closed session, to discuss, we need to discuss the employment situation, even though, um, our second candidate, uh, is not with us for the second night, uh, this is in accordance with, uh, the annotated code of the Public General Law of Maryland, section three, dash three oh five, D one, and also to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matter directly related thereto, as authorized by the general provisions article of the annotated code of the Public General Law of Maryland, section three dash three oh five, B three. Have a motion? I agree with everything what he said. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poked. Meeting is adjourned, thank you all.